The special meeting is called back to order. Will the secretary please note that all board members are present? The first item on the agenda is 3B, motion to adjourn executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn executive session? Is there a second?
Second.
A motion is made by Member Hernandez and seconded by Member Para. On that motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned, the executive session is adjourned. The study session is called to order. Will the secretary please note that all board members are present? Do we have Mr. Marquez? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Please note that today's meeting is being livestreamed. Also, please note that we have Spanish interpreting services available in the back of the room. Member Hernandez, will you please read this paper? Then I'm going to come and bring you.
Okay.
Buenas noches a todos. If you need to translate in Spanish, please look at Joel, who is sitting behind the corner.
Gracias.
The first item is 2A, review and discussion of Phoenix's Next Gen Safety and Security Plan. Dr. G.
Great. President Ross, members of the board and community. Tonight, we have, first of all, just had an executive session. Thank you to the governing board for your continued time commitment to Phoenix Union and safety. And I do also just want to thank exec team, tech staff, maintenance staff. You know, anytime, anytime we do this, it's nights and evenings away from loved ones and healthier activities. So to everybody involved, especially to governing board as well, thank you so much. Tonight, I will, in a moment, turn it over to Ms. Andrade, who, as you all know, is Superintendent Andrade next year. Tonight, she's in her capacity as Chief Achievement Officer with her team as we wrap up this year. As you see on the agenda tonight, there are four agenda items. In many ways, it's a level-setting day so that we can, one, remind ourselves of the current safety plan that exists, then a quick revisit of recommendations from the committee, and then we have two other recommended plans and policies from governing board members. So tonight, in many ways, is a level set. But I'll turn it over to, and tonight's not meant to be, let's debate it and solve all the problems. Today is, let's make sure the public hears it, we all understand it. Questions tonight are designed to be more just clarifying questions. What do you mean by that? Can we, that's, but the debate on what's right, what works, what doesn't work, that's not for tonight, as you all, as you all will see as the evening goes on. Tomorrow, there's an agenda item, Ms. Andrade, I think will allude to that as well, where we can do some of that initial follow-up and how do we start to prioritize. And then, of course, we have a safety study session again on May 30th, where we can dig it even deeper, and then board meetings from then on. So we're not, long way of saying, tonight is mainly presentation and level-setting, not problem-solving, in preparation for a little bit deeper dive in the coming couple of sessions. But I will turn it over to Ms. Andrade, who will re-overview and give you an idea of like, why, why is this stuff here? And how come the boardroom set up the way it is?
Thank you, Dr. Gueston. Good evening, President Ross and members of the board. Again, don't want to reiterate too much, but I think the goal of tonight is really about sharing. Sharing four different plans. We will ground with the Next Gen Safety and Security Plan. But then we have opportunity to go through the Student Safety Committee recommendations, the PXU Wellness and Safety Plan, as well as the Policy Plan submitted by Member Marquez. And I think what we're going to find, and what I hope that we find, is that there's a lot of alignment, and there's a lot of really good ideas. And so, so from that, I say that, in the spirit of positivity, I think there's a lot that can come out of this in the sharing. Tomorrow, though, I think it's about setting priorities. This is a comprehensive safety plan with a lot of things, from infrastructure to wraparound services to safety teams. And I think we, we all might understand that there's urgent, great urgency around developing and editing, having your input in an IGA. And I say that because I do not want to compromise the safety grant that we were able to get from the State Department of Education. And unfortunately, they do come with timelines. And if we don't act, they, there's plenty of schools right behind us in line that will grab our money. And so, so in the spirit of collaboration, I would like to spend tomorrow, actually, on one of the first points in the Phoenix Wellness and Safety Plan, which is really having the board play an active role in editing and developing and finalizing an IGA. I think we know that there are some core components that have lifted up that we really need to dig in on around officer selection and qualifications. We want to make sure that we're including the right student protections, and we want to make sure that we have accountability built into that IGA. Of course, every good IGA comes with guiding principles as well. So I would love to be able to spend most of our time tomorrow, really unwrapping and getting, getting into the meat of the IGA. And then, if we can get that moving, on the 30th, I think it's time to look at the rest of the comprehensive plan. And from a lens of, you know, okay, so where are we at currently, if anywhere? Where, you know, let's honor the work that's been done, if there has any work done. What are the implications for this? Because sometimes they come with unintended consequences, sometimes they don't. But I think we need to understand that going in. We have to look at the budget, because some things sound great, but they're really expensive. Other things, might, we may be able to shift resources around. And then lastly, I think it's about timelines, because this is a never-ending process. And how do we develop some benchmarks and timelines to, to monitor our progress towards some of these? Again, I think there's some real early wins that can come out of this. And then I think there's things like campus entrances, that I wish I had a magic wand, but that's going to be over, over a series of time with a bond. So with that said, I'd like to take a few minutes to ground us in the Next Gen Safety and Security Plan, just a quick, high-level overview to reacquaint everyone with what is existing in our plan. And then we will transition to each plan from there. With that said, I'd like to introduce Mr. Claudio Correa.
Thank you, Ms. Andrade, and good evening, Dr. Gueston, President Ross, members of the governing board. Board, you have a binder in front of you, and so if we could, please, open that up. We have reference materials there that we will be following. The first tab is the NGSSP, or the Next Generation Safety and Security Plan. And as Ms. Andrade alluded to, I'm going to provide an overview of this Next Gen Safety and Security Plan. It is our current existing model for safety, a comprehensive safety model. It has 16 components, it has five major areas, 16 components. Some of the objectives, six primary objectives for this comprehensive plan include increased overall campus and community safety, enhanced campus climate and culture, and a special focus on care for both students and staff, especially focusing on social, emotional wellness. Number three, improve lockdown and crisis readiness and preparation. Four, improve safety measures through technology. The fifth one, decrease reliance upon school resource officers as a primary source of safety. As we know, law enforcement has a role, but safety is much broader and more comprehensive. And then, lastly, number six, expedite the use of restorative practices district-wide. So as Ms. Andrade alluded to, I'm going to provide a quick overview in these major areas. We'll start with infrastructure. The first one is redesign campus entrances. Happy to report that the majority of our campuses have been redesigned to have a more safe entrance, including more secure entrances. We are still, as Ms. Andrade alluded to, we are still working on at least two to three campuses that we're still looking to improve. That's a significant investment, and it is part of our next bond. In addition, component two, upgrade on locking mechanisms. I can report to you that all of our doors on each of our campuses have been upgraded so that teachers and staff can lock and secure the doors from the inside, making that a more secure approach. In addition, component three, replace and upgrade cameras. We have expanded the use of cameras across our campus, especially for evening, weekend, when it's dark, so that we can make sure that we maintain safe and secure campuses, even in the weekends and the evenings. And then, as we transition to the next set of components, disciplinary and restorative practices, as I call her lovingly, mi comadre, Ms. Tarkington, we are, we are really the primary leaders in this space around safety. Yes, the infrastructure, but also the social and emotional. So she'll talk about the next components.
Thank you, Claudio. I don't think I need to have it too close. Thank you, President Ross, governing board members, Dr. Gueston and community. And again, just we'll speak to a high level on the three components under the disciplinary and restorative practices. And again, going all the way back to the fruition of this plan, I think it was around 2017, lots of work and restarts and resets as well. And so, in the world of restorative practices, I think a couple of things. So I'm not going to totally be linear with four, five, and six, because they actually interface with one another. And so, about a few years ago, about five years ago, we really redesigned the student code of conduct and really looked at, even when students have certain behaviors, we look at two pieces. We look at accountability for actions, right? But then in the teaching, we also look at intervention so that we can mitigate, you know, behaviors and just really decision-making. And so, even that design has had ongoing work with, you know, having those interventions, having those that are appropriate. We run a committee each year, and this year, really tried to make sure we had strong representation of all the employee groups. We went out and had an opportunity to do focus groups with students. And at parent meetings, also looked at some of those pieces, and you had an opportunity to look at that last month. And so, just in nature of trying to work through that, but also really knowing that training is key. And so, I think that, over time, we've learned that restorative work really actually shouldn't start at the backend. It should really start at the frontend, and understanding that relationships and building community and strong cultures and climates where it starts. That way, when there is a harm of sorts, whether it's people and people, or property, or whatever community, that we know how to respond to harm, and then how do we then repair relationships? And so, we actually know that it's hard to repair something that wasn't exactly there in the first place. And so, really, just that level set with training. And so, that takes me to both, you know, four and five. Really fortunate to do, not only do we have partnership and collaboration with the Safety Division, but also strong with the Teaching and Learning Division as well. And so, in the foundations, modules one and two, there's a lot of emphasis on building relationships. Building relationships with students, building relationships throughout the campus, building relationships or safe environments in the classroom. And so, really, we've been able to systematically start to work on that through the framework with both certified staff and administrative, and are continuing to build on that also in our trainings with our ESPs as well. And this year, I think that both Claudio and I, and obviously in the Teaching and Learning Frameworks, we've got a pretty comprehensive list, and at some point can share what trainings we've had. We also started as that, part of that reset with key employee groups. And I'll kind of call it that big, at-large student support team, including safety team members with trauma-informed work mediation, de-escalation, even community circle-building trainings we did again as well. And so, we know we have, I mean, this is, again, we'll keep saying a living document, but most important, building upon that so that systematically, you don't get just trained once. It's really owning that definition. So I think that covers that section pretty, pretty much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tarkington. And then the next set of components are our safety personnel. Component number seven, law enforcement usage, that's why we're here tonight. That continues to be a struggle for us, though I think a very important part of an overall safety plan. Again, just a reminder, board, that the focus for us in law enforcement is very narrow. It's around mandatory reporting requirements, it's around safety, and also, obviously, off-duty officers to support for evening event coverage to support safety. In addition, component number eight, designing and structure of school safety teams. We've been very fortunate, through your support, governing board, and through the leadership of Dr. Gueston, around standing up a safety division. It is, safety is so paramount, right? It's comprehensive, as Alyssa was sharing. And right now, our community, our parents, our staff, our students demand so much from us around safety. And so, standing up a safety, a safety division in short order was a great foresight. And so, we, as part of that, have increased safety teams, the support of the safety teams to include training, expanding their contracts so we can have more time throughout the year and into the summer to better train, to better prepare for a successful school year on an ongoing basis. So we're grateful for that. And then the next set of components, general safety and wellness. We also, as, as you probably have been able to see, that safety and security is an ongoing process. And so, this Next Generation Safety and Security, Security Plan has been an evolving, living document that we've added over the years. And so, we've added component 10, the evening and school safety. So we're very fortunate to have hired, recommended for hire, Chris Rhodes. And he is going to start with us in the summer as specially dedicated to after-school, evening, and event coverage. We are very blessed in Phoenix Union to have so many programs and opportunities during the day, but also in the evenings and on the weekends. And so, having that specialist dedicated to, or this district safety supervisor, dedicated to supporting safety during the weekends, and is a huge investment and, I think, a great opportunity. And then, component number 11, the community and extracurricular activities. Not only for our students, but also the community engages so much in our, in our schools. And so, providing that safety is really important. And then finally, additional areas, 13th, 14th, 15th, and 16th were added informally in, back in 2019. Again, as this document continues to grow and expand as, to fit the needs of the, of the current climate and future. Staff wellness, we know, especially in the pandemic, how critical it is for us as a district to invest in our staff for their wellness. And so, developing and launching a comprehensive staff wellness program was instrumental, as well as investing in staff and wellness specialists. Increase certified staffing specialists to support our campuses, including social workers, psychologists, and other certified, like, behavior intervention specialists. Also, increasing and investing in our educational support professionals, including our safety teams, to better support safety across all our campuses. And then finally, improving our student support models, including mental health services. We now have an MTSS director who is especially focused in this area, works with Ms. Tarkington. And that is an overview of our Next Generation Safety and Security Plan.
Board of learning, I know we've gone, we've gone over that a couple of times. Again, just a reminder to the public, we have a plan in place. It doesn't mean we shouldn't and can't look at other models and think about the future. But just wanted to give board one more chance to remind you what the current 16 components are as we consider changes and improvements to that. Any, any questions for Mr. Correa?
Madam Chair, Dr. G, Mr. Correa, is, on the additional investments in, in certified staffing support, do you, do you have an estimate on how much we've invested since 2019 to increase our social workers? I know we've done a lot. Dr. G, feel free to jump in.
Yeah, President Ross, members of the board. I, I just happen to know this number, because I've looked at it a couple of times. When, when, before we started to change the components of this plan, we, and this is classified-certified together, meaning counselors, social workers, but also liaison, safety staff. In 2017, we were spending $17 million per year in personnel, just the personnel. And this year, we spent over $34 million. So we have more than doubled our investment. Part of that is raising salaries, but a big part of that is changing ratios and having more. So from 17 to 34 million, just in people, base salary. That's not training, overtime, et cetera.
Any other questions, members? The next item on the agenda is item 2B, review and discussion of Phoenix Union's governing board's Student Safety Committee Recommendations. Dr. G.
Great. President Ross, members of the board, Phoenix Union community. Again, we're, tonight's level-setting, this, this one will be relatively brief as well. As you know, the governing board had a committee that met all year, brought forth recommendations. And last month, that, the recommendations as a whole were not passed. It doesn't mean that those can't be revisited in part, but the plan in total does not move forward as is. But again, there are parts and recommendations in there you might want to bring into the future. And so, tonight, this item's just back on here of just another quick review of what were the high levels and highlights of that. And it relates to the components of an IGA that Ms. Andrade talked about as well. I'll turn it back to Ms. Ross.
I've invited the Chair of the committee here tonight, if we have any questions for her, after Dr. G presents the overview. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, President Ross, and I will turn it over to, go straight to Mr. Correa. Go for it, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Gueston. Again, President Ross, members of the governing board. I'll provide an overview of the Student Safety Committee approved recommendations. And so, this is tab two in your, in your binder, just so you're aware. There were four major recommendations from the Student Safety Committee. And just to remind the board and then the public as well, listening in, that the Student Safety Committee was impaneled by this governing board back in September and, and conducted their work September through the end of March. So seven dedicated months of this incredible work in the evenings and also on Saturday, chaired by Ms. Katie, Chairperson Katie, who is with us this evening. Four major approved recommendations, I'll go through them as an overview. First is that PXU to enter into agreement with the City of Phoenix Police Department. That was approved, that was the first one. A second one was a motion to improve law enforcement by the form of school resource officers on each of our campuses. That's A. B, part of this is that to have off-duty, safety-trained officers to support for large events, for event, events during the day and in the evening. That was number two. And then, number three are around components of the intergovernmental agreement, or an IGA, five components of an IGA. The first one is guiding principles, and they were articulated as part of the work of the committee. The next component of an IGA that was approved was officer selection and roles and responsibilities. Another one was training. Another one was protection of students. And then the final one was accountability. So those are, those are three major approvals. And then finally, the fourth one, the last one, was the wraparound services. And there were five areas in this wraparound services. The first one was communications, the second was community, the third was physical infrastructure, the fourth was training, and then the fifth, fifth one was wraparound services. And those are the major, four major recommendations from the Student Safety Committee from September ending in March 28th. And with that, turning it back to you, Dr. Gueston.
Board, do you have any questions, comments?
President Ross, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Marquez.
Mr. Correa or Chair Gibson, I was curious about some of these recommendations that were passed without unanimous support from the School Safety Committee. And specifically, there was one of the motions to move to approve accountability, removing anonymous complaints. And then the other one, to move to approve protection for students, remove the qualified immunity and the guns or tasers being locked away as presented. I'm curious, what were the, I guess, the opposition votes against approving those two motions?
President Ross, members of the board, I don't know if you know the, the actual, we, we, they're in minutes. We can actually share those with the board, if that makes it easier, that we could actually share the voting records on all recommendations, unless you two happen to know that off the tops of your head. Because I do not.
If I heard him correctly, I don't think he was asking whether or not it was unanimous. I think he was asking, which is why, remember Gibson has gotten up. I think his question was saying to talk more in detail about it. Chair Gibson, will you respond, please?
And then, Ms. Gibson, I'll back you up.
Okay. Well, if I heard everything correctly, and kind of to the best of my memory, as far as the second one, which is sticking in my head, just kind of the, our ability to, like I said when I presented before, Jennifer, who was our attorney and advised us throughout the process, explained to us on that night that we should just make all of our recommendations, and the board can address financials and legalities later. I think there was still some general, like, concern from people during the vote on the qualified immunity issue, just knowing, generally speaking, as individuals, that that's not necessarily something that people can agree to legally. So I think that kind of is the explanation for that vote. And Mr. Marquez, Board Member Marquez, I didn't remember the first issue that you had brought up.
The, the second motion was a move to approve accountability, removing anonymous complaints. That was a vote of nine, three, two. So nine ayes, three nays, and two extensions.
Oh, yes, yes. What? Oh, cool. Thank you. I was like, let's see what I remember off the top of my head here. Where, I don't know. I do remember this conversation about anonymity. And I think some of the conver, and again, you could probably go back to that meeting if you're really eager and watch the conversation. But from what I recall, there was just conversation about the ability to, like, fully investigate complaints if there was some level of anonymity to it, is kind of the short of that conversation that we had.
And, and I would add, as a follow-up too, like, what, what kind of follow-up needed to be done if somebody reported something? And who would we have to follow up with to get more information, some of the details? I think that was part of the conversation you alluded to.
Yes.
I would also add, I think there's a difference between anonymous and confidential. And I think that the committee was leaning more towards confidentiality in reporting, but not necessarily completely anonymous.
Sure, yeah. I don't know that we ever actually explicitly had that conversation, but I'm sure that, that's something probably we were thinking about. I just don't know, I, I don't know we ever said the word confidentiality, so, but who knows what folks were thinking in their heads?
Chair Gibson McLean, I know that toward the end, you all wish you had a little bit more time, felt a little rushed. I just, while you have us all, I just wanted to know if there's anything that you feel like we did not get a chance to hear, or that we need more information about, or that you all wish you had more time to dive into?
No, you know, one of the things that I barely, I briefly mentioned after my presentation at the last meeting was what I just said to you, which was kind of inferring that because there's been no, like, lawyer that's reviewed this, or any person that's running Financial Safety District that's reviewed this, I didn't know if it would be prudent to adopt everything carte blanche without having those conversations. And that's just me as a professional thinking. Like, I don't go to my clients with a plea agreement, barely give them an overview of it, and then tell them they need to make a decision in five minutes, right? That would be unethical, I could get a bar complaint, et cetera. And so, that's kind of where I was coming from. Like, you should probably read the whole report, you should probably look at everything, you should probably ask some people some questions before you go ahead and just jump, dive right in. And that's just, I think, just good professional and ethical conduct, is, is all I was going to say. And then, yeah, just kind of, as far as like the data goes, the, during the night, it was just a little frustrating as far as making sure that you're really paying attention to the specific findings in the data and like, really digging into that. I, I would hate for all of the work that was done in gathering such specific information for like, like a lot of generalizations to come out of it, or over broad assumptions. And so, I think the data's pretty clear, and, and the way Iconico laid it out is pretty clear, if people read it with a good eye.
Thank you. Any questions, board members? Thank you so much for the long time that you volunteered, and then even coming back after. So we really appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me. Have a good evening.
The next item on the agenda is 2C, review and discussion of board member proposed, uh-oh, board member proposed PXU Wellness and Safety Plan. Dr. G.
All right, President Ross, members of the board. Again, those last two items were just high-level overview. You have them, they're in record, they're in board docs. Tonight, President Ross, governing board, Phoenix Union community, we've had two governing board member-proposed plans slash policy. And so, tonight is an opportunity, as I shared earlier, for a presentation. I am going to turn it over to, let's make sure she hears it. Turn it over to Board Member Hernandez. Member Hernandez to, to...
For the interest of time tonight, some of us are long-winded. I would like each presenter to try to limit themselves to 10 minutes, please.
Great. So President Ross, thank you. We'll turn it over to Ms. Hernandez. So it sounds like we're trying to get to 10 minutes. After that, of course, clarify, again, as I said earlier, clarifying questions, tonight's not a debate about, it's just clarifying. And then again, our team, just so the public knows, we have asked General Counsel to Ms. Gibson McLean's comment. General Counsel will take a look at it, what's legal, what's not legal, what's possible, what's not. Governing Board, I've also asked our team to price everything. So everything that's in the plans now has a tentative price tag. So thank you to the finance team and the talent team and HR. Again, tonight, we'll share that tomorrow, that's not necessarily tonight, but just know our team has been working around the clock to try to price what's legal, what's possible, what's feasible, what's financially possible. So we're doing all that behind the scenes, and we'll share that publicly. Again, tonight is presentation Q and A for clarification.
Sorry, thank you, President Ross. So I just want to say very quickly, thank you to everyone, to all the staff who helped gather this information, all this data, everyone who shared their experience, whether in public comment, in the surveys that the Safety Committee went out and did. I have had the chance to review the safety plan, recommendations brought by the Phoenix Union admin team and the recommendations provided by the Safety Committee as well. And the plan that I am proposing today is focused on meeting the needs of students and families. I believe that our district has the opportunity to create a plan that will work to meet the root causes of those challenges that students are facing, build more support for students' mental health, and support their families, center solutions over punishments, use this data to find solutions, and improves communication with families, teachers, and students, as we've heard in the safety plan. We are already building a strong family support team, and this plan strengthens social support services. There are 17 recommendations in the Safety and Wellness Plan that is shared with the board, and I want to be able to now share that with the Phoenix Union Community as well. So seven out of eight safety committee, seven out of AR Safety Committee recommendations, and three recommendations from the Phoenix Union admin team, and seven new recommendations. I would like this plan to be considered by the board in the May safety study session, and I believe that this proposal can move us forward. I hope that we can have more in-depth conversations about our safety challenges. So the, thank you for sharing the slides. I will quickly read through these recommendations of the Safety and Wellness Plan, and I'm happy to take any questions or comments after. And just for the sake of how my mind works, it does work a little differently, please let me know what recommendation you are talking about, there are 17 of them, so thank you. So, recommendation number one, Phoenix Union shall enter into an agreement, into an agreement with the Phoenix Police Department that will, one, establish the governing guidelines for the working relationships between Phoenix Union, the Police Department, and the Threat and Emergency Response Officers, and to establish the governing guideline for the Phoenix Police Department's overall interaction with the Phoenix Union Committee, Community. This agreement with the Phoenix Police Department shall be guided by the Phoenix Union Guiding Principles for Relationship with the Phoenix Police Department noted in Appendix A and the Police Department Officer Selection Criteria and Evaluation Requirements in Appendix B, found in the Safety Committee Recommendations. The agreement shall also be guided by the TNTP Sample Policy Language for the Police and School Partnership and the Charlottesville Police and School Protocols. This board shall have the final approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement proposed language, and will play an active role in the editing process and will approve the final version of the IGA. This is the Safety Committee Recommendation. Threats and Emergencies. Phoenix Union shall hire three Threat and Emergency Response Officers, one for each regional team. The Threat and Emergency Response Officers will support the regional teams with, one, assessing threats and coordinating the appropriate law enforcement agencies to investigate the threats, and two, responding to emergencies for the respective regions and engaging with any law enforcement dispatched for the emergency. Oh my God, did I do that? Oh, fixed it. Recommendation number three, Community Oversight of the Threat and Emergency Response Officers. Phoenix Union shall create a Committee of Students, Families, and Administrative Personnel to, one, select and assess hires for the Threat and Emergency Response Officers, and to evaluate all officers employed by the district. Another Safety Committee Recommendation. The board will identify criteria and application and selection process for the committee members. The committee will be charged with creating the position description for the Threat and Emergency Response Officers, structuring the hiring process, and making recommendations to the board. The committee will be charged with creating a regular performance evaluation process that will account for complaints and reports against the officer collected from the students during the school year. The committee will be charged with reviewing data on the activity and need for the Threat and Emergency Response Officers, and assessing how Phoenix Union can meet these needs through proactive non-police solutions. Student Recommendation Number Four, Student Protections. Phoenix Union shall create an anonymous, Phoenix Union Complaint Process for students, staff, families, and teachers to report incidents of violence, harassment, intimidation, or other inappropriate behavior related to the safety teams, private security, or law enforcement on Phoenix Union campuses. The board and the safety team will identify what data will be collected through the complaint process. The process shall be ready to launch and promote for the 2023-2024 school year. Safety Committee Recommendation. Recommendation Number Five, Continued Student Protections. Phoenix Union shall create a student working group that is voluntary, student-led, student-centered, and in which students are the majority, to draft a Student Safety and Wellness Bill of Rights. The student working group shall begin meeting during fall semester 2023-2024 with the goal of ratification of the Student Safety and Wellness Bills of Rights, Wellness Bills of Rights for the 2024-2025 school year. The board will take lead on the following: establishing the criteria for the makeup of the student working groups, including representation based on school size, developing the application and selection process for students, identify incentives to encourage student participation, and developing a support team of adults to facilitate the student working group, who will also undergo an application and selection process with the board. Additionally, community organizations that organize and civically engage youth shall be invited to assist in educating, mobilizing, recruiting, to participate in any student engagement efforts, including surveys, town halls, or school meetings identified by the student working group as necessary for creating the Student and Wellness Bill of Recommendation Number Six, Student Protections Continued. Phoenix Union shall approve the Alternatives to Expulsion Pilot for the 2023-2024 school year. This is a Phoenix Union admin recommendation. Recommendation Number Seven, Phoenix Union shall create and fill one mandatory notification and reporting specialist, a full-time certified staff position who will be responsible for issuing mandatory notifications and mandatory reports to law enforcement and the Department of Child Safety. Phoenix Union shall work to hire the mandatory notification and reporting specialist in the fall semester 2023 to 2024. The new position will work on the campus and regional safety teams, develop a streamlined digital reporting structure, develop guidelines for issuing notifications, and working with law enforcement once notifications have been issued, and work with staff and families if this is mandated by the PPD. The new position will also work with the new safety data team, as outlined in Recommendation Number Eight, to track patterns and notifications across all Phoenix Union schools. Safety Data Collection Analysis and Reporting, Recommendation Number Eight. Phoenix Union shall create and fill one safety data supervisor and one safety data specialist, both new full-time certified staff positions, to collect, track, compile, and analyze and report data relevant to the Phoenix Union Wellness and Safety Plan, including data related to threats, emergencies, mandatory reporting, and notification and events. Phoenix Union shall work to hire these two safety data positions in the fall semester 2023 to 2024. The safety data positions will work with the regional and campus safety teams, and the comprehensive campus student support teams to identify database solutions for the safety challenges faced by the district. The safety data will also monitor and ensure consistency in the following threat investigation and mitigation plan, which we will go through in Recommendation Number Fifteen. The safety data positions will also monitor and support with analysis and reporting for data collected in the mandatory reporting and notification process. Recommendation Number Nine, Student Family Support and Engagement. Phoenix Union shall fill the family and community engagement coordinator's positions for the comprehensive campus student report teams in fall semester 2023-2024. Another admin recommendation. Phoenix Union shall fill the student and family advocates for the regional safety teams in the fall semester 2023-2024. Another admin recommendation. Recommendation Number Eleven, Student and Family Support and Engagement Continued. Phoenix Union shall build a plan to increase the number of social workers, therapists, psychologists, behavior intervention specialists, and student prevention intervention specialists on each school campus. The plan should be built around national practices for student-to-wellness staff ratios, and should use the goal of one social worker per 250 students, as identified in the Safety Committee. This plan should examine, compare, and account for what campuses need the most support. Each campus should have a specific plan that addresses the unique needs of that campus community. A Safety Committee Recommendation. Recommendation Number Twelve, Campus Safety Teams. Phoenix Union shall examine the pay structure for the campus safety teams and adjust the wages of the campus safety teams to accurately compensate team members for their role in keeping campuses safe, to retain existing team members, and attract new talent to fill vacant roles on the campus safety teams. Recommendations for adjustment to wages shall be presented to the board consideration in the fall semester 2023-2024. A Safety Committee Recommendation. Recommendation Number Thirteen, Events. Phoenix Union shall develop a Request for Proposals process to identify private security options for sporting events and other large school events. The RFP process should be presented to the board for approval by the beginning of 2023 and 2024 school year. Recommendation Number Fourteen, Events Continued. Phoenix Union shall offer opportunities for families to volunteer and support with security and crowd control at sporting and other large school events. Threat Investigation and Mitigation Plan. Recommendation Number Fifteen, Phoenix Union Safety Team Working with the Threat and Emergency Response Officers, and the Safety Team Supervisor and Safety Data Specialist shall develop and present a Threat Investigation and Mitigation Plan that includes a threat matrix that will define and categorize the threats Phoenix Union receives. Identify the appropriate investigation plan per threat category, and identify steps that the district should follow to mitigate a threat. Recommendation Number Sixteen, Infrastructure. Infrastructure recommendations based on the, will be based on the May study sessions. Safety Committee and Phoenix Union admin recommendation. And lastly, Recommendation Number Fifteen, Study Sessions for the School Year 2023-2024 for implementation in School Year 2024-2025. The board shall hold study sessions during the 2023 and 2024 school year and develop plans to implement recommendations in the 2024-2025 school year for the following topics: bullying and fighting, improving communication about safety, wellness, and emergencies, training for staff, teachers, students, and surrounding communities, expanding wraparound services for the Phoenix Union Community, and improving engagement with surrounding communities. I think that was under 10 minutes, was it?
Sorry, that was very comprehensive. It seems like you did listen to the community, the Safety Committee, as well as staff. I have a, so that was my comment, and then I have a question. Is it your intent that this plan replaces our current plan, or it's like implemented and folded into our current plan?
By current plan, you're talking about the Safety Committee plan, or the next gen?
The next, yes, the next-gen plan.
Yes, thank you for that question, President Ross, and thank you for your comments. I believe that this plan, yeah, will be included in this and can further along improve our next-gen and safety plan as, as a part of that.
Members' questions for Member Hernandez about her presentation?
And can I say something, President Ross?
Yes, of course.
Again, the way my brain works, please let me know what recommendation it is, it's 17 recommendations in here.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, it's Q and A.
This is our Q and A, why, I'm maybe too close. This is our Q and A section. Are there any questions from the public?
Par has a question.
Yep.
Yes, yes, Member Par.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question on some of these, I, and I think Dr. Gistin, this might be coming from you or the team, but I had, in particular, the mandatory reporting notification, the way it's outlined here, I don't think that is legal, given I used to do trainings on mandatory reporting to mandatory reporters, so I have some concerns about that, so I want to make sure that we are in legal compliance with any recommendations that are putting, being put forward. And then the other, just questions around the cost of some of this stuff, what all of that looks like, and whether or not it's even fiscally possible for us to, to do these things like outright, or is there, and maybe, Member Hernandez, you're, are you also thinking about a timeline for implementation for some of these things? Could it happen over multiple years to get to, for example, the 1 to 250 social worker? I wholeheartedly agree with that. Also, the reality of what that costs to make that happen, I think we have to be reasonable in our expectations as a governing board, and so would love to see what a multi-year implementation plan for something like that could look like. So that was my, those were my two things.
Thank you, Member Par. Also, Member Hernandez, I don't want you to feel like you are in a place where you have to defend, remember where, this is you presenting, and then we'll dive deeper tomorrow, so don't feel like you have to defend any of the plan at this moment, or going to too much detail, you can do a high overview if you feel like that's appropriate right now.
Thank you so much, President Ross. Can I answer really quick? Thank you so much, Board Member Par, I definitely agree that this is very extensive, and it's a lot, it's a big plan. It's a big plan with a lot of moving pieces, and this is a place where I really truly believe everyone needs to show up and play their part, take their, you know, take their role very seriously, from the board, to the staff, to the students, to the families. I know this is not a perfect plan, and it's not going to be easy to decide in, you know, in four meetings, and thinking about timeline, this is something that I definitely want to bring to the table and discuss as we go along. I do think that, again, can't, we won't decide in the next four, or we need to decide on something in the next four meetings, but there's like certain things around, like you said, like the 1 to 250, those are things that further along, I hope we can continue to talk about in the next study sessions and be able to really discuss and create a plan for that, because I do believe that we need to start thinking about a bigger vision, because this is what students need, they have asked for this for years now, you know, it hasn't just been this year, it hasn't just been last year, they have asked this for, for years now, and I think it's time we owe it to them to start that conversation, to start those plans as soon as possible.
Thank you, Member Hernandez. Member Oliver, I saw your hand.
I'll wait till the mark, because it's more, well, I, number nine, recommendation number nine, I was just wondering how many do we already have in numbers for votes? Does that have to be answered tonight? Just how many are we, about, or do we have?
Yeah, the truth is, I can answer that quickly, and I would also say to the President Ross, members of the board, Member Oliver, sorry, I didn't mean... to the, President Ross, members of the board, Member Oliver, sorry, I didn't mean it, keep fore and out in malady. The more questions you ask tonight, even if we don't have answers, we can come with it tomorrow, but I can tell you that, that the governing board has approved two new roles in Phoenix Union. One is the family and community engagement coordinator, those are three, and they're meant to be in each region, and then there's a separate job description that's been approved, that's been, the, the plan for implementation is the following year, and that's a, like a family liaison, and that's school-based, so not regional, but more school-based. And so, the, this is three, placed in the regional model, the following year, between eleven and fifteen, kind of school-based liaisons.
Uh, Member Oliver, when you speak, please turn on your mic, because we can hear you in the room, but they cannot hear you online.
And then, President Ross, can I, can I do just a quick follow-up to Board Member Cara, and, but this is really to everyone, that when, when President Ross and Ms. Andrade, Ms. Rivas, and a few of I did kind of prep, we, we did a couple of things for you as we prepped for tomorrow as well. Legally, what's, what's legally possible, like what's the legal opinion on some of these? Board got a high-level overview today, but our, our, our idea is to give you legal perspective on each, what's legally possible, what's not legally possible. And then, ultimately, we figured that we would, things might fall into one of three categories then. Things are like, yes, that's pretty easy, we think we can pull that off. Two, maybe, but it might take some time, so not a no, but like, hey, we need to work toward that. And then three, there might be a category of, no, actually, that's not legally possible, or that's not affordable. So, but the idea, as we start to get toward this, is yes, like, what needs to be worked toward and what's actually not possible, and we'll come as best as possible prepared to say, this is what we think, how they fall into those categories, including money, to say, hey, here's, here might be a timeline over the next few years to start to work on this.
Yes. Quick follow-up, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Gueston, I, just a, a quick follow-up on that, I think I'd also want to know, especially as some of this is proposed additional committee work, that also takes time, resources, and staffing capacity, and so I, I would like to know what, what that would look like from a logistics operational standpoint for the system itself to run multiple and additional committees, because I know the school safety committee was an investment on our part, so getting costs on what that cost us, and then going forward, what, any, any proposal to do additional committee work, again, resources and staffing capacity would be my question.
I also, thank you, Member Cara, I also want board members to remember that these are proposals, and we can either, we have several options, we can fully adopt one proposal, or take bits and pieces from different proposals, or say no to everything. So, no decisions have been made at this point, and so as we come together to discuss this in more detail about which item or items we want to implement in the future, we can definitely dive deeper at that time. Uh, Member Marquez, are you ready to go? And thank you for that presentation, Member Hernandez.
Sure.
Can we, Board Member Marquez, can, can you officially call us to next item, President Ross, and then we'll go to two D.
The next item on the agenda is item two D, review and discussion of board member proposed Phoenix Union policy wellness, student discipline, and school safety, Dr. G.
Perfect. Uh, Board Member Marquez, in a moment, you can, you can get started. Board Member Ross, President Ross, you had suggested a time, I don't know if you want to give the similar time to Board Member Marquez, but I'll turn it back over to you, and you can turn it to Board Member Marquez.
Um, Board Member Marquez, thank you for your presentation that you're giving us tonight. Asking that you get, stay within the ten-minute time limit with your presentation, please. Am I spitting?
I don't, I don't think it's you, and then President Ross, members of the board, final thing, Board Member Marquez, we saw right before the executive session, or just now, I just heard, that you had sent a revised, so this is not the revised one that you just sent this evening, so you might want to, as you go over this plan, you might want to just highlight verbally what's revised versus what you, you sent and we published, and then we can put that back inside of board docs for the public. But just, again, keep in mind what the board has with them, was what you originally sent us, not what you sent us this evening.
Dr. Gueston, can I share my screen? Is that possible?
Yes, Member Marquez, you can share your screen.
Okay. Can you guys see that?
One second, Member Marquez, the tech team is trying to make it larger, we can see it, okay.
Okay, so I, I did send a updated copy earlier this afternoon, based on feedback that I'd received from different members of the community. I also tried to incorporate as much into this policy proposal, as much as I, I could, I, I could try to fit in from the Board Member Hernandez's proposal, and really, my intent here was to try to provide a framework to the rest of the board for how we start writing policies, and I shared this both as a PDF and as a Word doc, so that if each board member can get a copy of the Word document, they can provide their own edits, you know, strikes or red lines or additions, if there's clauses that I missed, or you feel strongly that we remove or exclude. So really, this proposal is broken up into five sections, but the three big sections is sort of, you know, thinking about what is our board intent and background, how did we get to where we're at, and I'm kind of going to jump all over the place a little bit here, and then the second section is really thinking about what are the policy requirements, sorry, let's see where it gets to that. So, policy requirements, authorizations, and directives, so, you know, first section is really what are our goals, the section, section is, you know, what are the policy requirements, authorization, and direction that we think will help us get towards our goals, and then the third section is, is talking about measurement and performance of effectiveness and evaluating, are we doing what we said we wanted the district to do, and is it achieving the desired outcomes? So there's, the third section is really about, um, sorry, measures of performance, measures of effectiveness, and oversight, and then lastly, going through some implementation guidance and, and oversight for the superintendent, and concluding, was sort of, you know, wrapping up the intent again of, of this policy proposal. I'll kind of, if it makes sense, kind of walk through it section by section, and would love to hear if there's any feedback, and, you know, parts that people feel strongly about one way or another, and, and hopefully give this to each board member as an opportunity to, to take their own crack at making edits or proposals between the next few study sessions that we have. For me, in the, the purpose section.
Board Member Marquez.
Yep.
It's me, I'm definitely getting too close. One second, our attorney has something, if you could just hold on one second, please.
Board Member Marquez, this is Lynn Adams, I just want to advise the board that you should not be sharing comments, revisions to this document with each other via email, that is a violation of the open meeting law, so to the extent that you have comments or revisions, you should share them in an open session.
I, I guess to that point, Lynn, is there a way to share the document through the superintendent or the board secretary, and then allow those comments to come back through the board secretary or the superintendent, if I wanted to give sort of an editable version of this to each board member?
You could give an editable, an edit, editable, there we go, version to each member, they could make their comments, but you cannot use the, the superintendent as a conduit to share all of those comments with you in advance and outside of a public meeting.
Right, I guess from a process standpoint, I guess would it make sense to, you know, share the editable version of this with each board member, and then each board member, if they had comments or strikes or their own red line versions, they could bring it back at a future board meeting or study session with the suggested changes or amendments they would make?
Yes, that's absolutely fine.
Yeah, and Board Member, President Ross, Board Member Marquez, we, we, after you present tonight, now that we have your new version, we could get that out to the board. Again, would just strongly encourage the board not to send it back, or each, send it to anybody else, and reach consensus in any way, shape, or form, you could bring recommendations to future study sessions and board meetings.
Yeah, and I, and I think on that point as well, for me, it'd be helpful, since I shared the editable version with Dr. Gueston and Espy, if staff has, you know, specific comments that they would like to make directly under the document, I think that'd be helpful for me to see, or, you know, for the staff to present at a future study session here.
Yes, sir, noted, for sure.
Correct, okay. Uh, I think in this acknowledgement section, for me, it's important to highlight this study from, you know, the American Federation of Teachers, National Education Association, Everytown for Gun Safety, about, you know, as a board, I think we have to decide, you know, and put on paper, you know, what do we believe? And for me, I very much, you know, I've looked at a lot of research on these topics, and when, when this report came out from the AFT and NEA and Everytown for Gun Safety, that's been updated since every school shooting we've had, since Columbine, I think it's important for us to, to put on paper and say, you know, SROs do not reduce gun violence in schools, and there's been a lot of rigorous studies that have highlighted that, but on the other side, there's also been conclusive evidence from rigorous studies that shows the negative effects of SROs in schools, which is criminalizing students, repercussions on student learning, and the negative impact from historically marginalized groups, including students of color, students with disabilities, and LGBTQ plus students. But there's, you know, each of you have a copy of this, this is acknowledgements and the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish with our policy here. Here's some definitions, this, the skeleton of this policy proposal is not something that I created, it was based on some national model policy that I know school districts and board members are considering around the country to start defining, you know, key, key terms that are used within school communities as they're working to reduce exclusionary disciplinary practices. For me, it's important, as we create a policy that moves away from school safety, that if we want to do that well, we also have to reduce our dependence on exclusionary discipline practices, so I tried to write this and incorporate as many ideas as possible to make it as holistic as possible, in line with some of the recommendations from the School, School Safety Committee. There's a large focus on professional development for existing Phoenix Union staff, moving towards quarterly training in some of these subject areas, I believe that was one of the recommendations in the, the School Safety Committee. And then, this next section is talking about positive behavior strategies and disciplinary actions, and I tried not to dictate to the superintendent or to the district to use restorative practices or, you know, PBIS formally, but to really outside, outline practices and alternative disciplinary practices that the, the district may choose to use and give the discretion to the superintendent and their designees for where and when and how to use them to achieve the intent of this policy. Like Board Member Hernandez's proposal, you know, again, stating the recommendation from the School Safety Committee to move towards the one social worker to two-hundred-and-fifty students as a goal, but doesn't make it a requirement, but it definitely outlines that it's a goal they're moving towards, and in line with that goal, not this school year, but starting in the next school year, it's requesting that the district officially, you know, maximize their grants to ADE to, to maximize counselors and social workers. Starting to go into guardrails and executive limitations, this outlines a grievance process for students and parents, it also outlines a school safety complaint process, which I think is in Board Member Hernandez's proposal, in line with our, moving away from expulsions and outlining alternatives to expulsions, talks about doing something similar with long-term suspensions as well. And then, in terms of working with local law enforcement, I believe specifically that during this interim year, it's important that we, we don't move too quickly away from school resource officers entirely, if that is the goal of the board, and, you know, one of the values of the board is to move towards, you know, non-school-based policing, but to do it in a way that adopts the, the guiding principles that the School Safety Committee recommended as they were adopted in the Charlottesville IGA, or memorandum of understanding and protocols between the Charlottesville City Schools and Charlottesville Police Department. One thing that this does is it transitions towards, you're setting up an intergovernmental agreement for the, the next school year in August, that's based on our IGA from the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty school year, but then starting to look at the twenty-three to twenty twenty-four IGA, and basing that specifically off of the recommendations from the School Safety Committee, and then also based on the Charlottesville City School Police Department protocols, which was adopted in twenty twenty-one, and specifically in that Charlottesville City's protocols, they no longer have school resource officers all, but they have a pretty detailed IGA that describes the relationship and protocols between the department and, and the school district. I think similar to Board Member Hernandez's proposal for policy, police notification guidelines, this policy proposal moves us towards, uh, creating, you know, digital reporting structures for these requirements, and then it outlines sort of the, the four most extreme cases of when to call nine-one-one and request direct support from law enforcement regarding firearms, destructive devices or weapons, acts of physical violence, bomb threats, and arson, in accordance with federal and state law. Direct law enforcement support, it authorizes up to three emergency response liaison officers, and this is very much in line with the proposal that was presented by Dr. Gueston last summer at the July and August board meetings, which brought us to this long, long conversation around school safety holistically, and the incredible work that the school safety team has done, so I'd be curious to hear from staff, you know, if the proposal that was put on the table last summer still seems feasible for this next school year to, to move in the direction of three, or calling here a threat and emergency response liaison officers. I, I also think it might be interesting to look at if, and instead of additional police officers, we might look at additional nine-one-one or crime stop dispatcher support that are dedicated to Phoenix Union. I think I heard that multiple times from the School Safety Committee, is it's sort of about making sure that there's a level of customer service and streamlining the relationship with Phoenix Police Department, and to that point, also potentially adding police assistance and police aides. Police assistants can take reports, but they're non sworn and, and non, they, they don't carry weapons as well, so for mandatory reporting requirements that don't meet a immediate threat of violence, where you would need to call nine-one-one, it's possible to have police assistants that are dedicated to Phoenix Union that can come out and take the, the report. The section I added here about threat investigation and mitigation planning is included in Board Member Hernandez's proposal to create a, a matrix for, to identify and categorize threats that Phoenix Union receives and appropriate response to each of those threats. And then, moving into accountability and measures of performance effectiveness and oversight, you know, really, here's a list of, of data we're starting to collect as a district, specifically about exclusionary discipline and disport, disportionalities, what's type of training the district is holding for staff, and then, I'm sure I missed data that may be helpful for us, so if other board members or staff have recommendations, it'd be helpful to identify additional data we'd like to see on a regular basis, and then instead of dictating new staff to meet these data collection requirements, I tried to put it back on the superintendent to let us know, could we meet these data collection requirements with existing staff, or if it was necessary to hire new staff specifically to, to meet these data requirements. new staff specifically to, to meet these data requirements. Um, this proposal here for a school, uh, community oversight, uh, comes from Board Member Hernandez's proposal. Um, and then, uh, I got this recommendation to add an additional layer of local law enforcement data collection and reporting, uh, monthly reports from whatever, uh, law enforcement offers with, uh, are employed by the district, and then, uh, reports to the Board, uh, twice a year, and then also, um, a log of any professional development those officers go through during their time with the school district. Uh, and then, this next section creates standing committees, this is something that other Boards in other states have, uh, standing committees that are somewhat generic, and my initial thought was to create a standing committee of Board members, three to five Board members on school safety specifically, uh, that could really dive into the oversight and, uh, and implementation, and propose new policies as needed, uh, as we move in this direction of moving away from school-based policing. Um, but I found some model policy that created five standing committees, an accountability committee, a finance committee, a policy committee, and property committee, and it made sense to me to, to, to have these committees, one, as a district to address other things outside of school safety, uh, but each committee could really, um, also make school safety a part of, of what they're looking at from each unique component of, you know, how, how much does it cost, are we accountable to meeting, um, what we say we're going to do? Uh, and then policy committee, that policy committee can draft new policy, uh, to bring to the entire Board as we iterate on this process of creating the best policy for our district, and then a property committee, uh, specifically as that relates to school safety, um, is thinking about the, the physical security of our, each of our campuses. Um, and then here's some execution guidance and the conclusion, uh, to, you know, bring this, uh, district, um, in line with this policy by the 2024, 2025 school year, um, and then also directing the Superintendent to work with the General Counsel and the Board Counsel to identify, uh, conflicts in our existing policy manual posted on, uh, online, uh, to make sure that we're, we're bringing each policy that's currently on the books for the district, uh, in line with this new policy. And I, I don't know if I'm over or under 10 minutes, but, uh, feel free to let me know if y'all have any questions.
Uh, Board Member Marquez, uh, and Board, President Ross, just running over to get a quick legal perspective. Um, yeah, it's, it's over 10 minutes, but it wasn't that much over, uh, but I will turn it back over to you, who's just asking if we have time for Q and A, um, and then you are going to make a comment.
Uh, thank you for that, Member Marquez. Uh, the time you put into this, you can tell that it, it took effort, and we really appreciate you being so invested in, in this, so thank you. And then I have, before we open up for Q and A from our, uh, members, I just have a quick request. Uh, Member Marquez, if you could, because it was a little bit hard for me to follow on, because there's so much content, if you could, and I was checking with our attorney to make sure that you can do this, if you could pull everything that is duplicate of Member Marquez Hernandez's, uh, proposal, and only have like stuff that is, uh, unique to yours, when you, and, and give it to us tomorrow, that would help me tremendously, um, if you could do that. I checked with our attorney, and you can do that, so if you could do that and have that for us tomorrow, that'd be awesome. And with that, members, do you have questions or comments about Member Marquez's proposal? Member Parra.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, and Dr. Gueston, this might be a, a question for you. Um, I, I, it is my understanding that the new administration at the Department of Education is no longer directing school safety grant money to counselors and social workers, even though it's allowable in state statutes, so, and I know, well, actually, Miss Andrade had mentioned it, we were awarded, um, funding from the Department of Education, and that is specific to officer support, it cannot be used for counselor, or whatever you can respond to on that.
For sure. President Ross and Board Member Parra, actually, the, the State Department, um, did allocate new money from the state, has to go to officers, but current money that they had last year could still renew social workers. Uh, and so we actually pursued both, and so the social worker renewals, we submitted for those, got all but one, um, that we, right, I don't think we got the one, but we, we'll make sure we don't lose one social worker in that process. And then, as you all know, we applied for, uh, based on how the grant structured, it allowed for us to apply for up to six officers, uh, we applied and received, uh, funding for the six officers. Uh, the, the social workers, that's easy, we don't need new agreements or anything, uh, but as you heard from Miss Andrade, and you all know, uh, if we want access to free officers for next year, we need to, we need to have everything, we need to be very close to IGA components by the June 1st Board meeting, uh, for us to realize the free officers.
Members? Member Oliver?
And I hate to phrase it this way, but, uh, there was a news report about, um, six of our schools applying separately, um, Superintendent Gueston is smiling, it was kind of confusing, is that a thing?
Yeah, President Ross, Board Member Oliver, let me try to explain what, what Board Member Oliver is talking about. So, based on, um, where we currently had safety grants, um, that dictated where we could apply for the officers. And so we had some schools say, hey, why did my school get an officer and that school didn't? Um, and that was strictly how the grant was structured. What we were able to apply for, again, not knowing where we were going to land at the very end, uh, we were able to apply for officers at schools that didn't have the social worker, grant-funded social worker, that's how it got to the six. Because if you had a grant-funded social worker, they weren't going to give you multiple, you had to pick one or the other. So knowing the value of the Board, we weren't going to say, well, no social workers, let's just go for officers. So we went for renewal of the existing, that then left six schools that didn't have a grant-funded social worker or an officer, so we applied for officers at those schools, but we applied under a shared model. So we said that if you gave us six officers, uh, and let's say we applied for North but not Camelback, um, for the officer, we wrote it in a way in which we could, depending on, again, we don't, we don't know the direction of the Board in the final, uh, analysis, that we could then work with the state to say, okay, you gave us an officer for North, but the Board adopted a model that would need it to be shared by four schools, now can we play in that, um, and, and try to share with multiple schools? So yes, the grant, um, was focused on the schools that didn't have grant-funded social workers, um, but we still wrote it in a way in which they could share schools.
Dr. G, will, tomorrow, will you?
We, yeah, we can try to explain that better tomorrow, but.
With the schools.
Yeah, uh, but President, and Mr. Corey could probably tell you the schools, but the, the quest, President Ross, I remember Oliver, we got that question right away of like, how come my school didn't get an, an application for a safety? It was just based on how it was structured at the state level.
Member Hernandez.
Thank you, President Ross and Dr. Gueston. Um, so then, just for clarifying, because I was, that was a lot, but, so then we had the grant for six officers, but only five social workers, is that correct?
Uh, no, President Ross, members of the Board, so the, uh, we have, we have two social workers at every campus, comprehensive campus, and one social worker at small schools. That's not, as you all know, that doesn't include counselors and interventionists and SPISs, et cetera. So we have two at every school, large comprehensive campus, and again, that also doesn't include regional. Of those two at every campus, one at every small school, six of those were grant-funded. I, we got five of those back grant-funded, which means we will have to pick up the cost for one of those social workers. But based on where those social workers were grant-funded, that then allowed us to apply for officers at schools that did not have grant-funded social workers. We still have social workers at those schools, they're just not grant-funded, because the state makes you pick either or. So, uh, hopefully that clarifies a little bit more.
Dr. G, um, one second, if you have questions, member. Uh, Dr. G, I, I do well learning when I can see stuff.
We can write tomorrow.
Yeah, so, that's what I was going to say, tomorrow, like, if we can, that would be helpful. Thank you. Uh, members, any, yes, Member Parra?
Just a, a quick follow-up to the visual, and Dr. G, I think, um, you, I mean, you mentioned this too, but I, I would, and in that visual, the additional investment that we have made, oh, from 2017 to, to now, in, um, the social worker and wraparound support, you've said we've doubled that funding, so, um, I think if it's helpful to have a visual of like where we were with the 17 million versus where we are now, um, to see the growth and the trajectory, and, and, um, you know, knowing that it took multiple years to get to where we are, um, just so the, the Board has an understanding of like, these, it takes time to increase that kind of capacity in a system as large as ours, um, that would be helpful for me to have that visual as well.
Members? Yes?
I have a question. Yeah, regarding the participatory budget and being reallocated to safety, it's my understanding that's 1.2 million per academic year, um, I would like to confirm that, but also, um, what are the, what are the participatory budget, what's the participatory budget going to this year, what are the, what are, you know, what are the suggestions?
Thank you. Members? Member Marquez, do you have a question before we move on to the next item? Okay. Item 3A, Request for Future Agenda Items. Members, are there any items you would like to recommend to be considered for future Board meeting agendas? Item 3B, Adjournment of Study Session. Is there a motion to adjourn the study session? Is there, a motion has been made by Member Hernandez and segmented by Member Austin. Um, on this motion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned.